All right, I think we'll get started. We're going to begin this morning with our invocation led by Councilman Larry McAtee.
Please stand. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as citizens of Oklahoma City to look at the future, to see what resources will have provided to us, what services our people need. Give us wisdom as we make these decisions that the decisions that are made would bring glory to you and would be pertinent to the lives of our people to increase their quality of life. Thank you for our new mayor. Give him his special wisdom in this first budget cycle, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Councilwoman Salio, if you wouldn't mind, ladies and the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we call this meeting to order, and we have no items under Office of the Mayor today. And we have two items requiring separate votes. For A, this is a resolution setting public hearings of May 15th and May 29th for budget-related presentations and public comment. Is there a motion?
We can have Doug come up and talk to us about this just for a minute. This is our procedures to make sure that we follow state law as we approve the budget this year.
Very good. Doug?
Yeah, so I'm pleased to be here this morning to present a brief overview of the budget before you. But before I begin, I'd like to thank my team from the Office of Management and Budget that helped prepare the budget. And so if y'all would stand up, I have specialists Susan Cruda, Erica Van Der Syppen, Lori Hurd, and Lindsay Baird, and then Analyst Marcus Johnson, Jacob Booth, Justin Henry, and then Mitchell Massey is helping me here with the computer. Do you want me to just talk about the?
Resolution.
The resolution, and then we'll talk about it.
By the way, thank you, all of you.
Yes, thank you.
I've known Marcus since we were in kindergarten, by the way.
Oh, hey. So, I've got an overview of the budget to present, but the resolution that's before you, we normally set three hearings, and when the Finance Committee will be meeting, because of the way the months fell or the weeks fell with every other meeting schedule, we're doing kind of a combined introduction and first set of departments here today. And then in two weeks, we'll have another set of departments, and in two more weeks, another set of departments. And then on June 5th, will be budget adoption. And so we have to set that schedule so that we have those hearings identified. There will be publication in the newspaper related to the budget so that we follow all the guidelines of the Municipal Budget Act in terms of timing of when things have to be noticed and voted on. I don't know if that's kind of.
Yeah, and so basically, we do this over four different meetings to get this all let out. In a minute, Doug's going to come back and give us an overview of the budget and three departments today, and we'll do three or four departments in two weeks.
Four in two weeks.
Four in two weeks, and then three two weeks later, and then finally the adoption of the budget the first week of June. And that gives us a little bit of time. If something happens and we want to make some changes or something along those lines, we do have one week buffer, so if we need to, we can go on to the following week. So we always try to build that in in case something happens, although we rarely use it.
Great, okay. Well, thank you. And that's on the resolution. Is there any, we had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll cast our votes. Resolution is adopted unanimously. We also have Item 4B entering into executive session to discuss collective bargaining negotiations with our different employee groups, police, fire, and APSME. We'll need a vote to enter into executive session. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We will do that at the conclusion, near the conclusion, after Citizens to be Heard. We will now recess our council meeting and convene as the Finance Committee. And Mr. Couch, I will kind of turn it over to you.
We're pleased to present the budget this year. The economy's a little better. We've got a quarter cent sales tax that we didn't have in the past, so we've got some opportunities, although most of the quarter cent sales tax, we did appropriate at the mid-year budget with the, and dedicated that to police and fire. Doug's going to give us an overview.
Yeah. So as we look at the budget here, the overall budget totals $1,563.9 million. And what we see, as we look at the various categories, is some very different growth rates. You can see the general fund is up over 10% to $460 million. This is again, as Mr. Couch mentioned, the quarter cent sales tax increase as part of the Better Street Safer City Initiative. That'll be in place for the full year, as well as we've had better-than-expected sales tax growth in this year that we're building off of into next year. Our other operating funds are only up by 0.4% at $241 million. There's really a number of ups and downs, and as the different departments talk about their budgets, we'll get a little more information on those, so I won't go into a lot of detail about that right now. Our non-operating funds are up significantly, and again, the Better Street Safer City sales and use tax are really a big piece of that change. Together, they add over $125 million to the budget. Now, at the same time, the budget for the MAPS III fund is only down by $11 million. Again, they've been storing up cash as we've been going into these big projects. Over the next couple of years, they'll be spending significant amounts of that down, but at this point, for the FY '19 budget, there's really not much of a change in MAPS III, so that's still up high. And now we're adding on the Better Street Safer City. It takes us to a significantly higher budget. Over the next few years, you'll see that change dramatically, and that's one of the reasons we break out the non-operating funds from operating, because as we build up that cash for those projects, it can kind of distort the budget a little bit.
So if you figure, we've got all this money banked from MAPS III, and we haven't spent anything on the Convention Center yet. We've only spent probably less than half of the park. We probably spent 2/3rds of the streetcar at this point in time. So we've got all that cash there that will not be in the budget next year, or some of it will be for the Convention Center Hotel. So we anticipate next year that 1.53 will not be that large. It'll be down because we'll be paying out those MAPS III projects, those big MAPS III projects.
As we look at some of the significant changes in the budget, our total number of positions is 4,803. That's an increase of 36 from our amended FY '18, as Mr. Couch mentioned. We amended the budget halfway through the year to take into account that extra quarter cent, added the positions for police and fire, as well as some for Public Works there. So some of the other significant changes that we've got in for FY '19 is that city's currently in negotiations with the Civic Center Foundation, have them operate Civic Center Music Hall. That will result in a reduction of 27 positions in Parks and Recreation. Public Works is bringing utility cut repairs in-house rather than contracting that service out. That adds 12 positions for that responsibility, as well as five positions they're adding to support the Better Street Safer City sales tax and bond projects. As we look at Development Services, they've added 10 new positions in their various service areas through the increase in occupational taxes that will accompany the state changes in liquor laws that will be taking effect later this year. Airports is adding seven positions in various areas. Parks and Recreation will be adding a couple of positions for trail maintenance and two for field maintenance at Lightning Creek, Wiley Post, Stars and Stripes, and Stars and Stripes Park. Some other significant additions that again will be addressed today by some of the departments presenting, the public transportation and parking. We'll begin, we've got funding in to begin streetcar operations. We've got Sunday bus service added in, as well as an enhancement to night service with the addition of Route 22. Under Parks and Recreation, through a transfer to the Economic Development Trust, we'll be funding the beginning of the Scissor Tail Park operations. And as we mentioned, police and fire have a full year of funding for the 189 positions that were funded under the Better Street Safer City quarter cent sales tax and the general fund. So as we look at the position changes over the last several years, you can kind of see our ups and downs that have happened with the economy. And I've shown on here where we started a year ago at this point, and when I introduced the FY '18 budget last year, we were looking at 4,642 positions. But again, with that quarter cent sales tax that was adopted by citizens, we were able to add in 120 positions for police and fire, as well as fund 69 positions that have been frozen. So when you see that FY '18 number with the asterisk, 4,767, that's the amended total for FY '18. Our FY '19 budget is an increase of 36 from that. So our budget process is just one of the key pieces of our strategic planning process. I've gone through this diagram in years past, but you can see we begin with the citizen survey that's again going to be done this summer. It helps inform council priorities, which in turn give direction to departments as they prepare their strategic business plan. And then finally, those plans guide their proposed changes to the budget as City Manager's Office and the Office of Management Budget work together to put together the proposed budget that you see before you. And of course, as we go through the year, we carry out the activities funded in the budget. We're collecting data, reporting on that, evaluating our progress, making decisions that, what we need to do going forward. So with that in mind, I'd like to kind of just quickly touch on the seven council priorities that were adopted in the fall of 2016. I'm not going to read through all of those, but again, you'll notice in the budget book, we use those little icons to denote the areas that support each of those council priorities. So as we look at our revenue now, that's really the driver for our budget. Again, our total budget overall is $1.56 billion. The largest recurring revenue source is taxes. They total 653 million, or about 42%. Well, and again, our, my chart on the PowerPoint isn't working too well. It says it online, but anyway, it's 42% is taxes. And when we look at the total budget, that includes property taxes in the debt service fund, which totaled about $93 million that go to pay off our general obligation bonds. Fees and charges include things like franchise fees, building permits, ambulance membership fees. That's 14.5%. Transfers in come from the trusts that support water, wastewater, solid waste, and airport services, about 2.5%. Other revenue includes interest, leased revenue, and other miscellaneous sources, and accounts for about 1.3% of our revenue. Federal grants, 2.5% of our total budget at $39.1 million. And then fund balance is just a real significant source this year. It's at 37.4% of the total, $583 million. And again, because MAPS III is so significant, we've broken that out separately here as its own kind of slice of the pie at 28% or $437 million. Then other funds, all the other funds, their fund balance is about 9.4%. So again, that's part of the reason we break out operating and non-operating, again, because that fund balance amount can really distort the budget. As we look at our operations, now personnel costs become, or taxes, I'm sorry.
Doug, just stop for a second here. And again, operation, the operation budget is basically the general fund with the public safety sales tax added to it, and with the utilities and the airports. Those are all operating, not capital, operating dollars, but not part of the general fund. So it's those, those items plus the general fund to equal the $700 million.
That's correct. And taxes are the primary source of support there, again totaling $425 million, about 61%. Again, sales tax is the primary driver there at $354 million. Fees and charges account for about 26% of the total. Transfers in, again, those are from those trusts like Aqua, the Airport Trust, totals 26, total 5% of the budget. And then other revenue, such as interest, is just a miniscule, 0.8% of the total. Fund balance accounts for the remaining 2.4%. So $701 million is the total for operations. If we focus in on just the general fund, it's $460 million. Again, it's a fairly similar makeup. Again, sales tax, the biggest piece at 55.5%. And then other taxes, 13.9, with the primary one there being use tax. We have franchise fees that are 9.1% of total, come from utility companies that pay us for the use of our rights-of-way. Fines total $20.4 million, represent 4.4% of the general fund. Fees and charges, such as building permits, administrative charges, those sorts of things make up 15.6% of the total. And then other revenue, again, a small piece at 1.5%. As we look at the expenditures, if you, again, we look at all the total $1.56 billion, using the categories defined in the Municipal Budget Act, normally, personal services is our largest category, and our people. But again, because of the balance that's in the MAPS III budget, we've split that out. But capital, when you combine MAPS III and other capital, is over 41% and is our largest piece of the budget in total. Now, if we look at those operating funds that really drive what citizens see as the services they see every day, personal services becomes the vast majority of that at 70.5%. It just, it takes people to provide operations there. Zeroing in on the general fund, again by category, personal services become just a little bit bigger at 72%. And you can see the other categories there. I would note that you won't see capital listed as a general fund expenditure. We do fund $5.75 million as a transfer to the Capital Improvement Projects Fund that we'll use for building and fleet replacement in the general fund, but that's as a transfer. So that's in our transfers category, again, $5.75 million to support capital maintenance of our facilities. As we look at the general fund by service area, in broad terms, you can see where our general fund dollars get spent. Public safety, 64%. General government comes in at 8.2%, and that's because all general government for the city of Oklahoma City is funded through the general fund. It has no other source. So personnel, finance, city manager's office, those kinds of things are funded in the general fund. Public services is the second-largest category at 18.4%. It includes public works, development services, and planning. And finally, culture and recreation. The general fund is made up of Parks and Recreation Department and the cost for operating Cox Convention Center in Chesapeake Energy Arena. So when we develop the budget each year, there are standards and best practices we follow. We follow the Oklahoma State Law, the Municipal Budget Act. And as I go through the budget book, I'll show you the sections that specifically address the requirements in the Municipal Budget Act. The Government Finance Officers Association operates the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award that recognizes governments that follow the guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting and GFOA's best practices on budgeting. And each year, we submit our budget to be reviewed by GFOA and peer reviewers to make sure we meet those practices. And I'm pleased to tell you that again, last year, we received that award for the 32nd, or 31st year for FY '18. And I would note that last year, only four other jurisdictions in Oklahoma received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. So we're trying to make sure that we're following best practices when we develop the book. And so just to kind of take, just a moment to kind of walk through the book that you have before you. Our introduction section provides the message from the city manager, as well as kind of some overview of the council priorities and leading for results, as well as the major budget changes that have been adopted by department. And then kind of an overview of Oklahoma City. Section B is our financial summaries, which kind of gives a nice, some nice detail on our revenue and expenditure overviews, and some information there, as well as an excerpt from our five-year forecast that was presented back in February. Section C, departmental budgets, is what the departments will be really talking about. Again, this is the funds that are available to them, the positions that they have to provide services to our citizens. Section D is our fund summary section. That's what really is going to be adopted at the end of this process in June. You'll see on each of these funds, we show the revenue expected to be received, the expenditures by department, as well as those categories that the Municipal Budget Act spells out of personal services, other services and charges, supplies, capital, and transfers. And then we have a little information about each fund here in the budget book. Section E provides an overview of our capital that we have in each of the different funds and what projects are expected to be worked on and completed next year. And then finally, our appendix in this first volume is, provides our policies and appendix and our statement of compliance with our policies as well. And this is the second year in a row that we've done a second volume, this smaller one, that looks at performance. And so this is, again, department by department, looking at the issues that they've identified, as well as the performance measures that they're tracking to make sure they're delivering citizens, to the citizens, the services they expect and in a good way. And so anyway, if you have questions about how the budget book is arranged or the details that are in there, I'd be happy to talk about that. As we mentioned, we have presentations today, Development Services, Public Works, Public Transportation and Parking will be going. In two weeks, Police, Fire, IT, and Courts. And then in four weeks, Airports, Parks, and Utilities, with budget adoption expected on June 5th, and the fiscal year to begin on July 1st. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the budget you have at this point.
If I might just ask, so these documents, you expect them to be online by the end of today, probably?
Yes, yes. We've been working with our Public Information Office. We have the, they have the documents. We'll have those out later today.
At OKC.gov.
That's correct.
Right.
And we've got them in smaller chunks, so you don't have to download the 600 pages at once. You can kind of pick your department or that sort of thing. We used to have it as one document. It'd take you about three or four minutes for it to download. It's a little easier to get to.
You know, I've recently come from the state Capitol, and I just have to say, the contrast in, you know, preparation, just in the first 10 minutes of your presentation is pretty jarring from what we receive at the state Capitol, in a good way. You're, this is fantastic.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
We offer to hold classes on how to do budgets. Doug, I do have a question. Could we look at the first book?
Yeah.
So page B 26, just to kind of serve as a primer for governmental accounting?
Yeah.
Looking at the MAPS III sales tax fund? So in the middle column, for the year ended June of 2018?
Right.
We will have collected roughly $66 million of sales tax revenue, $3 million of interest.
And then we'll have $383 million that's left over from prior years.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and so that gets to my question. So at the end of the year, our fund balance, not our cash, but our fund balance is $453 million. Or is that also an indication of how much cash?
So that, at the end of FY '18, so that's just what revenue was available in FY '18, $453 million.
Right.
Then whatever was spent during the year will be deducted, and that's what would be available as fund balance for the next year.
Okay.
So as we look at FY '19, that last column there, you can see $437 million is the amount of fund balance that's expected for FY '19. And so what that would tell me is about $20 million was spent during the year on various projects by the MAPS III office, assuming everything came in at that level.
Yeah, that just seems surprising to me, that so little. I mean, I know 20 million is a large amount of money, but, so that means, because we pay our various contractors on a percentage of completion basis as they complete certain aspects of the projects. So we're anticipating only $20 million worth of projects to be completed.
The only other thing that could, that could be going on there is, this was our original budget for sales tax. Sales tax came in better than expected, so we would have had higher revenue than what was point, this was our budget. This was our expectation for budget of $453 million.
Mm-hmm.
So I'd have to go back and look and see what we actually ended up with. We may have ended up with a higher revenue than that, which would allow for a higher level of expenses than that $20 million.
Okay, so final question.
Yeah.
The $453 for the year ended '18, does that equate to cash? Or do we, as we make expenditures within the MAPS III fund, continue to show that as an asset until those assets are moved out of the MAPS III fund into some type of fixed asset fund?
So, let me make sure, so I'm not an accountant, so let me make sure I'm understanding you correctly. When we buy capital, like you're talking about a fixed asset, like, let's say, the Convention Center, when it's completed?
Yes.
That will be purchased in the MAPS III sales tax fund, is my understanding, and will be an asset of that fund?
Yeah, and it stays in there until it's completed, and then we move it over into some fixed asset fund? I mean, I'm not a fan of governmental accounting. It's a complex.
Yes. I believe that's correct. I don't know, Craig may be able to better address the accounting side of how that's handled.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's, I mean, it's an asset as the cash when we have that.
Right.
Both, even within the MAPS fund, it's not, you know, when we have the MAPS for kids, that was a trust, it was a separate trust.
Right.
So we'd have to move assets there. With this, it's all within the city. So as cash in the MAPS fund, it's an asset. As, once we make the purchase and we own the asset, it's still just a city asset. So in both cases, they're city assets.
Correct, but as it relates to the MAPS III fund balance, and maybe if you could look at page B 26, is the $453,515,119, I know it's a projected amount.
That does not have assets in it. You're right.
Is it strictly cash?
Yes, yes.
Is it strictly cash?
That's correct.
Yes. And then, so at the end of '19, we plan to have $442 million of cash?
Actually, if I could have you turn to page D 39.
Uh-huh.
D 39 is where we do each, section D is each fund.
Okay.
And we do the revenues and expenses, as well as use of fund balance.
Okay.
And that fund, D as in dog, yes. D 39, so this is the MAPS III sales tax. And what you can see is, even though the budget, the budget for fund balance for FY '18 was $383 million, we actually ended up with a larger fund balance than we expected. You can see down at the bottom of that middle column, $434,246,187 was the actual balance at the beginning of the year. So we actually had a higher balance at the beginning of the year than what we budgeted for. And you can see that during the course of the year, we actually added $3 million to budget, or to the fund balance, is the expectation, which means if we brought in $66 million worth of sales tax and $3 million worth of interest, 60, that's $69 million, 66 of that got spent. It's, you know, six, so only $3 million was added to fund balance.
Right.
So then we begin the year with $437 million as our projected beginning fund balance for FY '19.
Yeah.
As we're going forward.
Now, this indicates that at the end of '19, if I'm following it correctly, ending fund balance comes down to zero.
Well, and what we've done is, we've given them budget so that they can encumber or obligate all the money that's available. Whether they end up doing that or not will depend on the, you know, schedule for awarding the various contracts. But from our perspective, when it's encumbered, when we enter into a contract, like say for the Convention Center, when that's awarded?
Yes.
Those $200 million or so will be, in essence, spoken for and no longer available to spend.
Yes, it's all coming back to me. Thank you.
I have to point out that it takes a CPA to ask questions about there being too much money in a fund.
Yes, yes.
It's pretty funny.
Those numbers give you that impression, though. Anyway, I'll leave it at that.
No, I appreciate the question. It's just, it's just funny. Normally, we ask about, you know, when money disappears.
Yes. Very good. Thank you.
One last question then. What type of limitations do we have on those funds in terms of investing them until they are expended?
Our investment policy is contained in our, in the appendix. And let me see if I can find, at least, yep, here we go, on page F 14. So the primary focus for our investment, when we invest, is safety. So safety is the most important rule. Second is liquidity, that's available to pay bills. And then return on investment is the final priority in terms of trying to get a good return on our investment. So it's primarily in government securities. I'm sure the city treasurer, Bob Ponkila, could talk more about it, but they're very safe investments, again, safety being the priority.
No, I agree, and I think that's good. I just think the estimate may be low, seeing what's happening to interest rates. It's, it's, I calculated just about 1% return on our funds. I think we could do better.
Yeah, and the downside, especially things in like the MAPS where the money's available, it's invested for longer terms, so that may have been invested a year or more ago where it may have been at a lower interest rate at that time. And generally, we buy and hold our investments. We don't normally try to sell and time the market or that sort of thing. So that may be entering into that also.
So Eric Weiner is here to talk to us about the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we get started, I think is, one of the things that you'll see probably from each of the departments is it takes quite a few staff to assemble a budget. And so my appreciation goes out to a lot of the Public Works staff. We had involvement through all of our divisions, our division heads. Debbie Miller, who's our assistant director, obviously coordinated a lot of that work, and also Joanna McSpadden, our business manager, facilitated a lot of the financial work. And then Shannon Cox, who's not here with us today, but she assembled a lot of the presentation materials. So again, the department was included as a whole, so I take credit for the department that just realized that over 400 staff, you know, had some sort of input at one point or another. So we're here as first step to present the 2018, 2019 proposed budget for Public Works. I begin with our mission, and, you know, it's pretty critical for Public Works as we look at the services that we provide, construction and maintenance, planner view and inspection, emergency response, so that our residents can live, work, and play in a safe environment. So, I mean, we really are key into this, and so all the things that we do on a daily basis, whether it's roads, bridges, drainage, whether it's emergency response services, I think you're going to find all of those things really at the core of the budget this year. When we break down the department by personnel, we are made up of seven divisions. What you saw in the, in the budget preview is that we have 18 new positions, and I'll What you saw in the budget preview is that we have 18 new positions, and I'll outline those here in just a moment, but we are growing from 391 to a proposed 409 positions. Our largest is our streets division with 241. Our smallest is our traffic engineering division at 15. But again, we service all those different areas that I've already described. When we look at the city as a whole, we always talk about how big the city is, we talk about the 620 square miles of area, but this slide really helps outline a lot of those other features of the city that sometimes just go unnoticed. But, again, talked about the size. When we talk about 50 miles of drainage channel, when we talk about 3,500, almost 3,600 miles of streets, and I mentioned that, you've heard me discuss in the past, we have over 8,000 lane miles of street in Oklahoma City. As we continue forward with Better Streets, Safer City, and as we get out to our residents, sometimes there's confusion what a lane mile is versus just a mile. And so, we are actually starting to talk about miles of resurfacing, whether it's a two-lane road or a four-lane road, we're actually just talking about those linear miles now, but still substantial mileage in the city, just when you look at it from point A to point B. We have over 12,000 traffic signals in service, we have over 765 signalized intersections, and over 50,000 traffic control signs. So, these would just be street markers, stop signs, yield signs, just throughout our community. This is the seven divisions that we're going to go through today, the admin, engineering, field services, project management, stormwater quality, streets, and also our traffic management. And these align also with our lines of businesses that are in the strategic business plan, also a part of that performance monitoring that Doug mentioned just earlier. There's a lot of information on this slide, but this really is at the core, comparing our budget last year to the proposed budget that you're receiving this year for consideration. There are 18 net new positions that are included. So, in the very first column, this was last year's fiscal year 18 budget, you'll see the total positions in that second column. That third and fourth column are the proposed, and so, I'll highlight just a couple of these changes as we kind of look across, from administration at the top, there's actually a net reduction of one position. In engineering, we're adding four. These four positions in engineering are going to help support Better Streets, Safer City, and the project management needs there. In field services, we're adding an inspector. This is going to help make sure that we're doing adequate inspections in the field. We're actually moving the Oklahoma River section to our streets. So, you'll notice that there's seven to zero. We are not eliminating the Oklahoma River program, we're simply moving those positions to our streets maintenance division, where those staff were already residing. When we look at project management, we're adding a project manager for the bond, and the recently passed 2017 bond. And we're not proposing any changes in stormwater quality. In streets, we actually have a significant increase, this is where you've noted the 11 positions, there's actually 18 total for the department, but streets is where we're growing the largest, and I'll explain that in just a moment. It has to do with our utility cut repair change that we're making for this year. So, we're going from a budget of nearly 130 million to 245 million. I'm going to explain the difference. The thing that you're going to see the biggest jump is in the non-operating or capital side of the program, and that's because Better Streets, Safer City is now a part of the departmental budget. So, bringing those new revenues into the department are showing up in this budget this year for a total of 245 million. We do have some major budget changes, and so, I've mentioned just a few of those, but to be a little more specific, and this is going to be found on page C 157, it'll summarize those. Our departmental budget actually begins on page C 155, but on C 157, this is a summary. We have changes in positions, we're adding Better Streets, Safer City as a core to the departmental budget, then we're also focusing even more strongly on street repairs than that utility cut program that I just mentioned. So, we're going to be adding a data, a data traffic analyst to traffic engineering program, a new inspector, adding the positions for the utility cut, we're also adding five project management positions to support all of these different changes and the major changes for this upcoming year. When we look at this in a breakdown that you'll find here, this is the total departmental budget, 245 million. You'll notice the large green area, and that, of course, includes all of the non-operating or that capital portion of the program, that 192 million. It's about 80% of our total. But it kind of skews, because again, when we look at the operating, and the operating's about 53 million, those are the other colors that you see here at the right side of the drawing. So, I'm going to jump to this next slide. This is just the operating portion. So, if you take away the Better Streets, Safer City portion, you take away the other capital, and you look at just operations and personnel, this is what our budget looks like at 53 million dollars. Streets, you'll see at, again, it's about half, about 50% of the total departmental budget, but they also have about half of our employees, and so, that aligns very well. But you'll see, we're now covered in the other divisions. Administration is about 16%, engineering at 8%, field services at 8%, our smallest, again, is traffic at 3%. But again, when we assemble this, we're looking at those core services for streets, traffic, bridges, drainage, all the maintenance, emergency response services. This is that core of over 400 employees that will serve the city of Oklahoma City.
May I interrupt and ask just, how successful are you, have you been in filling these positions?
You know, we're finding that there are some challenges. We're finding that even in our work crews, sometimes there are certain challenges just for different reasons, but I would say recently, we've seen some great success. That does not mean that we still don't have some vacancies, we do have some vacancies that we're working on. We're having to work a lot closer with personnel, making sure that the advertisements that are going out to generate that interest, that we're getting candidates that are qualified. But I expect that we're not going to have, hopefully, too much trouble this year, as we have a lot of needs in the department this year, but we're working closely with personnel to make that happen.
Great, thank you.
This next series of slides, we're going to go through the seven divisions, and this will help break down what each of those divisions do and how much that we have resources for each. Engineering, engineering is the division that is responsible for the drainage, the technical review, and the paving engineering. When we talk about technical review, this isn't just our city projects, this is also all the private work that occurs in the city in the right of way. So, every time you see a site going up, whether it's a new Sprouts neighborhood market, whether it's a 7-Eleven or a Walmart, we're looking at those plans and the staff that's included here, at 4.4 million and 24 positions is part of that delivery. We are, we had already increased in the mid-year, so, you have heard Doug mention, we actually did a mid-year budget. We increased two positions in the mid-year for project management, there's three additional positions, and also 2 million added for base repair contracts. Those are the street repair contracts that we have to service the city as a part of this division that we've managed in fiscal year 19. When we look at field services, field services' primary responsibility are the inspections in the right of way. So, when the work is actually taking place, not just that plan review, we're making sure that things are meeting city ordinances and codes, but making sure that the contractors are meeting specific city standards, this is the division of 50, funded at 4.4 million dollars to do just that work. We're adding an inspector to this division this year, just to help maintain and keep up with the existing workload. Project management, budget of 3.6 million, 31 positions, this is the group that manages the building, and all the infrastructure-type projects that are out of the Public Works Department. And it also includes AE contract negotiations, contractor prequalifications, ensuring that the contractors also working for the city are qualified. We're adding two positions for fiscal year 19. This is to help take on the additional load of the newly passed bond program. So, as we continue to grow with a number of projects, we're also growing in our project management section as well. These are some of the dollar outputs, and a lot of what you're starting to see on this graph are some projections, so I use these as a graphical reference. We do have some actual data for calendar year 16 and calendar year 17, and predominantly, for the past several years, we've been focused strictly just on the bond output. But with the recently passed sales tax initiatives and Better Streets, Safer City, you're going to see that we do have some significant growth, this and in the coming years, as we actually have both programs to manage simultaneously. Also to note on the bond program, and we've been working very closely with the finance and budget offices, we're increasing our bond delivery by about 5 million dollars a year. So, you're going to start to see that dark blue portion of this graph as we start to track this progress, increasing. You're also going to start seeing that sales tax, the lighter blue, starting to stack on top of those, and again, this is in support of the need for additional project management, also the additional need for inspectors in the city as we increase that workload, most of which is going to be on our city streets. So, bond is more than just streets, it's obviously the parks and all of the other improvements that we do with the bond, but in the Better Streets, Safer City, it's predominantly streets, sidewalks, trails, bike lanes, and street skates. Moving to stormwater quality, I think this is a program that provides a tremendous amount of service to Oklahoma City, and a lot of things we don't probably sometimes just realize that are there, so I'll explain those. This is a budget of 3.3 million, 28 positions. Yes, they do a lot of environmental characterizations, they ensure that we're responding to potential for illegal dumping activities, and we do have inspectors, but some of the other things that they're maybe not as well-known for but are part of the division is household hazardous waste, and then also our public outreach program, where we actually go into a lot of the Oklahoma City public schools to try to make an impact on young students. This is our special collection event that we just held on April 7th. Of course, this was our final snow day of the year, so our turnout was a little bit lower. I think temperatures were hovering around 25 degrees, we still had 229 participants. What makes the special collection special is that at household hazardous waste, we are not allowed to take tires, ammunition, and medication, and this is an event where residents are able to dispose of those things properly to keep them out of our landfills. And so, we are still totaling those numbers on the tonnage that we took in, but we are keeping a significant waste stream by doing these special collection events each year. This is our household hazardous waste facility at 1621 South Portland, and so, if you've not visited the facility, it is open Tuesday through Saturday, it does have a drive-through operation so that you never have to leave your vehicle. So, if you place household hazardous waste items in, it's a very quick pickup, which you see here on the right side of this photo, it is free for Oklahoma City residents, and so, we ask that they just bring their water, your utility bill, and all of the disposal is free. Once the disposal is complete, what you see on the left-hand side, there's actually a storefront to our facility, and those recyclables that were, say, unopened containers of paint, pool chemicals, pesticides, and things, you can actually go in and for free take a number of items if you'll simply make that deposit when you are doing that recycling. So, if you've just got some motor oil after changing the car, and you want to walk into the front of the store, you might find some of those commonly-used things in your household that you can take from those shelves at no cost. We also participate with eight other cities, Edmund, Village, Yukon, Shawnee, Moore, El Reno, War Acres, and Bethany that also participate in this, so we're keeping a lot of waste out of the metropolitan area. Last year, we collected 684,000 pounds of waste, just in household hazardous waste in Oklahoma City. So, large numbers, the facility's very active, and obviously, a big part of our stormwater quality program. And then to round out stormwater quality, this is our public outreach program, I think I've introduced Wayne Drop to many of you before, but Wayne goes into our Oklahoma City public schools. We outreach to almost 2,500 students each spring, but it's an important objective to obviously start teaching kids very early about the hazards of disposing in a storm drain or doing things to creeks, just to making sure that we keep them environmentally friendly and conscious. It's obviously a big part of our program. You'll notice here on the side, there's a number of workshops that are also held, there's a newsletter that goes out, we're also active on social media, and then I mentioned the household hazardous waste event as well. Moving to streets, traffic, and drainage, this is the largest of the divisions in Public Works, it's also the one with the most change this year. Streets, drainage, and traffic operations, so everything from signal lights to street maintenance, budget of 26.7 million and 241 positions. Now, we are adding about six positions this year, and that's moving those river crews from basically a public works engineering function to streets. So, they're really not a net gain of positions, but that's a part of the increase. The other is, we're adding a position in admin to assistance and management work, this would be a management specialist position. 11 positions are being added for the employees that are going to be responsible for utility cut repair maintenance, and I'm going to elaborate on that in just a moment, and then one additional data technician. But this is the largest growth area in Public Works, and again, we're really focused on streets, Better Streets, Safer City, the customer surveys that are going out to the residents and finding, again, that streets becomes and maintains a number-one priority, so we're trying to address that the best we can this next year. This is the condition of city streets, and this is that PCI index that we've talked about, the pavement condition index. And so, we are increasing the PCI and have been for a number of years, we've actually included data that goes clear back to 1213. With the bond program and with some of the other program funds that we've had in Public Works, we've increased it about a point each year, but obviously, with the citizen survey, it's not quite fast enough. We think that this graph is going to dramatically improve this and next year with the implementation of Better Streets, Safer City, strictly focusing on a lot of street resurfacing, less focus on street widens, but again, we're very looking to make this a dramatic improvement with those new resources being made available. Our current average of all city streets is about a 65, 66 today.
Eric, can I ask a question or?
Yeah.
Try to get some assistance. So, a problem I have is, with some of our citizens, they'll call in and say, "Oh, our street is terrible, we need repaired immediately." Well, I'd go out there and drive it, and it's really not that bad. There might be, you know, one or two areas that could certainly have a little bit of improvement, but overall, the city's, the street's pretty nice. I was thinking if we could somehow create a video that would indicate the different types of streets, so that one that fell into a category of, say, below 60 PCI could be shown, you know, in this video, one that might be in the 70 PCI category, and one in the 80% and above category, just to help our citizens understand that we're trying to prioritize our efforts with both the safer streets as well as our bond money, and help them gain a better understanding that while they think their street may be in this repair and really in bad shape, comparatively speaking, it may not be that bad at all. So, just a thought that if your group could somehow.
That's a great idea, I like that. I go to a lot of HOA meetings where people are saying, "Well, how do I know where mine rate's at?" And if they could look at a video online, that would be wonderful. The other thing on the PCI index, if I want to, I don't know the answer, if I want to look at my street on 118, can I get the PCI index off our website?
So, to answer both questions, I think yes. I mean, I think we can work on, make a document that we could get available to our residents and make it available online that'll help better understand what the PCI looks like. I think a 101 on PCI, something like that, right?
Sure.
But yes, we have the data available, and we can look to see how well we can make that available online at data.okc.gov. There's actually a number of GIS-based information layers that are available to the public today. So, anybody that goes to data.okc.gov, I need to double-check to see if the PCI is one of those layers that's available, but there is a lot of information that's there, and we can absolutely look and see if we can make the PCI information available as well, where you could look at your own individual street, not just an arterial street or an area.
You might even, for example, you know how the police vehicles now have in-dash cameras, have a vehicle that would demonstrate, you know, as the car is going down? I mean, there's certain streets that really fall pretty low, like Southwest 29th, parts of Southwest 59th, parts of I-240 Service Road, you know, they would meet one criteria, but really, in many of our residential areas, they're not that bad, and when I try to explain that, you know, sometimes it's, it just doesn't seem like I'm very convincing. Anyway, thank you.
And I do want to say for Southwest 29th Street, it is part of the bond issue.
Yeah.
All the way from Shields, all the way over to May, I think.
I-40.
All the way to I-44. So, we really will take care of a lot of Southwest 29th Street in this bond issue.
So, one of the technological advances that we were actually able to make in the last year is, Public Works did procure instrumentation that is on one of our city vehicles that is able to drive city streets every year now, and that includes every residential street and every arterial. Previously, we were only able to do arterials yearly and residentials every other year. So, we have better and better data. Now, last year was the first time that we were actually able to get that done, so when you ask the question about is the data available, we need to ensure that the latest information can be. I know that we were a little bit reserved because some of the data was older, I did not want to put misinformation up on the city's website, but we can look at both of those. But I think we can also maybe, Councilman Greenwell, put some information about our data collector that's showing a city truck that may be in neighborhoods, and so, if they see this vehicle, they know that it's collecting the data and maybe how it works as well. Yeah. So, again, our goal is to increase PCIs, and it's been happening slowly with the resources available, but I think the message I want to send is, with Better Streets, Safer City, and the support of our citizens, knowing that it's also a number-one priority to improve city streets, we're hoping to be able to show multi-point gains in the next few years.
Eric, I'm sorry, but could you describe for me what a 67 is?
So, a 67 is going to be a street that has probably a lot of cracking, it could even have some very wide cracking, it could have a number of pottle repairs that have been made to it, but what you're not going to find is that the edges are all broken apart, you're not going to find that there's deep ruts that are in there, you're going to find a drive that's fairly smooth except for the occasional bump, but it's also a street that you can do a mill and an overlay on very quickly, so we can mill off two or three inches and put on a new surface. Streets higher than that, we can use a product called microresurfacing, which is a much thinner overlay and sometimes doesn't require milling at all because the cracks are very tight and there's very few repairs. As we get to numbers under 50, it just depends on the street, sometimes they lead to complete reconstruction, meaning the entire street almost has to come out and the entire street has to be replaced, there's not enough material there to save. But we can help with the information, I think, that we were just discussing, and maybe let that be available to our residents as well.
Thank you.
The differences in each, and it's obviously more expensive towards reconstruction and less expensive toward that thin layer, that microresurfacing as well.
Thanks.
Yeah. So, the department also does utility cut repairs, and I've mentioned this just earlier in the presentation, pottle patching and railroad maintenance, and so, let me focus just a little bit on utility cut repair. So often, one of the biggest complaints that I think that we find, and this is something that utilities and Public Works strive to complete more quickly, is that repair after a water line breaks and puts a hole in a street, or a hole in a yard, and us being able to respond. Traditionally, in the past, we've had a number of contractors assisting us with this. But one of the advantages that we've found with Public Works and utilities this year is that we actually share the same work order system. So, the day before, when utilities has made a number of line breaks, repairs, and they're ready now for street resurfacing, we traditionally have temporarily patched those streets. And it might be a number of weeks. Our goal is to actually complete those 80% of the time within 30 days to have that contractor make those repairs. But there's a lot of information that's coming out of a city system and then going into contracting. With the ability for Public Works to share the same work order system, we can actually get notice that very next day that a water repair had been made. And we're now starting to set some new targets, and we're hoping to be well under that 30-day current target where city crews are out making that repair of that city street almost immediately. And I don't think it's something that we're going to be able to do in two or three days, but we'd like to see that go well under four weeks into maybe like two or three weeks, which we think is going to do a dramatic improvement. We hope that it's going to also be favored on the citizen survey, that we're actually able to complete these repairs more timely. We can eliminate some of those confusions where we actually get that temporary repair. It's not a permanent repair, and it's a very rough spot in the street. Eliminating that because we're going straight to the permanent repair as well. And again, this is going to be supported by those 11 positions in Public Works being able to do that, not just part of pottle, but a part of what we're going to call utility repair cut program. So, we hope to show you a lot of new data, especially when we do our next performance monitoring and update to the city council. This is some pictures of the pottle repair, I think, which we're most familiar with. We do average about 80,000 pottles a year. We've not had a lot of rain this year, so our numbers are a little bit down. We're currently sitting around 43,000. I know the year's not over, but we look to be having a lesser-than-average year, which is always good news when it comes to pottle repair. And again, on the right side, we do a lot of rural road maintenance. And so in Oklahoma City, not every street is an asphalt street, not every street is a concrete street. And so, we do maintain a number of miles of rural roads throughout the area. This is the 80% pottle repairs within three working days of the complaint. This is just the tracking of that average. And again, as we talk about performance monitoring, we look at this number very closely. Again, we're a little bit low for right now. We're sitting about 60% within three days. Our target is 80. We'll make adjustments. But again, as we look at these reports, no less than monthly, this is where we're able to adjust crews, crew sizes and things to make sure that we're providing a good product to the residents of Oklahoma City. Traffic signal replacement and striping. Again, when we mentioned all the 750 signalized intersections, and when we look at lane striping that is starting to be missing on certain streets, we do have the equipment and operations. Part of the budget does include the cost to continually upgrade the signals and also additional striping. So, again, these are just some of the services provided by our streets maintenance division. And then our final division that I'm going to report on this morning is traffic management. It is our smallest, but they do quite a bit of work regarding the traffic commission, the approvals. This is where all the engineering review takes place, a budget of 1.6 million and 15 positions. So, when we look at fiscal year 19, we've got a lot of work ahead for Public Works. We're going to estimate, again, that we're going to complete approximately 80,000 pottle repairs. We have about 77 miles of street resurfacing. There are a few widened streets as well. We're going to be looking at about 20 new miles of residential sidewalk. When we talk about those plan reviews, we're expecting about 500 plans that are going to be coming in for technical review to look at those. There's a lot of activity and a lot of development throughout the city, keeping our office very busy. There's about 90 million in GEO bonds that will be delivered, about 52 million in facilities. One of those projects would be like the ASA Hall of Fame that's currently out to bid and preparing for construction this summer. We'll do about 35,000 inspections this year, and the value of those inspections will total somewhere around $300 million. So, with that, I'm going to wrap up our Public Works presentation this morning. Appreciate the opportunity to present, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any other questions for Mr. Greenwell?
Yes.
All right. Next up on the agenda?
I have a question for you.
I'm sorry, you all have an opportunity under assistance to be heard at the end of the meeting.
I also know that just give three minutes. We've got several items on the issue. I said that doesn't make sense. It says that's issued. Three minutes for me.
Yeah. Next up is public transportation and parking.
I'll tell you what. I'm going to write this. I'll also, you know, put you on. You're a rosy. You disrespect me, pal.
Well, so, good morning, Mayor and Council. Pleased to present the FY 2016 proposed budget for the public transportation and parking department. Would like to take a minute just to recognize a couple of staff members that are here this morning that were very helpful in developing the budget and the presentation. We have Michael Scroggins, our manager of marketing, customer relations and technology here at the computer. And in the audience is Melissa Rousey. She's our financial services manager, who obviously was a big part of putting this budget together this morning. The presentation that we have, you'll notice it's structured in order to convey to council really our overall service delivery, where public transportation is in terms of as a priority for our community. We're also going to look at our department issues, which are really our biggest challenges as a department, and what we're doing to try to address those issues. And then we'll conclude the presentation with an overall look at the financial resources that are required to provide public transportation and parking services. So, beginning with our first slide, and this is some information that should be pretty familiar to council, but it does indicate where public transportation is in terms of a priority for our residents. This information is from our last resident survey, and you can see consistently, public transportation scores high in the area where citizens are asked to indicate what city service would they like to see the most improvement in. We're behind streets, ease of travel and police, and as you can see, that's pretty consistent throughout. Looking at the next slide, this is actually some data we have from our last customer survey. So, this will give you a sense of what customers of Embark Transit System think of the service and what their priorities are. And you can see over on the left, in terms of overall service ratings, we're at about 74% of the respondents indicating that the overall service is either good or excellent. And we have about 9% of respondents indicating the service is either below average or poor. So overall, we think we have some pretty good overall service ratings. On the right hand of the slide, you'll notice the priorities that our customers have for bus service enhancements. When asked about one improvement they would like to see made to the transit service, you can see the weeknight service and Sunday service both scored very high in the minds of our customers in terms of what's important to them. And I'm pleased to report that the budget that is proposed this morning includes both an incremental enhancement to weeknight service as well as establishment of Sunday service. And we'll get into a little bit more detail on that. Of course, more bus shelters and more routes also scored well with customer priorities. So, the next slide here is a picture of what we do. We truly are a multimodal transit department, bringing Oklahoma City Streetcar online here at the end of the calendar year, as well as new services such as ride-share that were introduced a couple of years ago. And we continue to play an incremental role in downtown parking services. We are very optimistic about our planning efforts for bus rapid transit and look forward to keeping council updated as we work down that path towards our Northwest Multimodal Corridor Plan. So, beginning with our strategic business planning, as a city department, we go through the city's strategic business planning process. It's a very structured approach. One of the advantages to the process is it really gets departments to thinking about the future. And what are those challenges? What are those obstacles that we need to be planning for now, today, in order to take as most, the most proactive approach as we can in addressing coming needs? And so, within the public transportation and parking department, we've identified four issues. And again, these issues are really what we're considering to be our biggest challenges, and that is state of good repair, workforce development, sustainable growth and service development, and community relations. We'll get into each one of those in a little bit of detail, but you'll also notice how each one of those priorities, or I should say, issues, if we successfully address them, tie to the council priorities. Specifically, the council priority to develop a transportation system that works for all residents, the priority to promote safe, secure and thriving neighborhoods, and the priority to maintain strong financial management. And you can see the council priority icons that Doug had mentioned earlier. So, our first issue is really our issue of state of good repair. And I won't go through all of the narrative here on the slide, but basically, the way we structure these issues is we try to identify the trend. What is occurring? What are we seeing as a department in the marketplace, with our customer base, with internal and external factors? And then, what do we anticipate happening if we don't successfully address that trend? And so, as you can see by the information that's on the slide, addressing these issues is just important to what we do on a day-to-day basis, and it's important to what we address in our long-term planning efforts. So with state of good repair, state of good repair really is maintaining our fleet and our transit assets, as well as our parking structures, as it says, in a state of good repair. In this particular priority, we typically talk about the condition of our fixed route bus fleet. And, you know, it was really only two years ago, we were looking at the fixed route bus fleet, and we had, you know, 30% of our fleet that was past useful life. We were providing service with a really aged fleet. As you know, that impacts reliability, that impacts maintenance costs. And so I'm pleased to report that today, we have no buses in our fixed route bus fleet that are past their useful life. They're all current, and we don't have planned replacements until 2021. So, we're really in good shape in terms of our fixed route bus fleet. Hopefully, you've been able to see some of those 2016 and 2017 models on the street providing service. And then I'll also mention that as we've replaced those buses, we've kept with the COTPA Board of Trustees Directive to transition to alternative fuels. So we have a newer fleet, and we now have 36% of our fleet that is powered by alternative fuels, primarily CNG. And then, again, looking ahead, looking into the future, our next bus replacement will be around 2021. And that's where we'll have 15 2009 model buses that we'll need to replace. And again, I'm pleased to report, we do have a funding plan for that replacement, thanks to the voter-approved 2017 GEO bond transit proposition. As you recall, it passed with around 60% approval. And obviously, we're thankful and appreciative of council and their leadership in including that transit proposition and part of the bond program, because it really has set us up in good shape for fleet replacement in the coming years. On the next slide here is a couple of projects we have on the parking side of our operations. We have two projects that we're managing now. One is just about to wrap up. This is the Century Center roof replacement. The helicline section of the garage, basically the spiral ramp used to access the different parking decks. The roofs on both of those heliclines were in bad shape, needed full replacement. If you look at the top left, you can see kind of the underside of some of that new roof decking. And then on the bottom left, you can see an aerial view of that new roofing material installed over the Century Center roof there. On the right, this is our Sheridan Walker parking garage improvement project. And with these projects on the Sheridan Walker garage, you'll be able to notice them from the inside and from the outside. And so, the types of things that we're doing to that garage is we're repainting most of the painted surfaces. We are remodeling the elevator cabs, we're re-striping the garage, we're replacing all of the high-pressure sodium lights with LED lighting. We're installing some canopies on the outside of the garage. So I think you're really going to be pleased with that project when it's complete. Got a couple of photos here just to show you kind of where we're at in terms of the parking deck. In the top right, this is one of the completed parking decks. You'll notice the newly painted surfaces, the striping and the LED lighting. Same thing with the photo of the stairwell, new paint, lighting. What it really does is it really creates, with that LED lighting and the fresh paint, it really creates a better feeling of safety, kind of a better feeling of openness and cleanliness. And we're optimistic about how the project is going to turn out when it's completed in the summer.
Jason, can you help me with what the timeline is for the exterior changes? Because that's something I've been really concerned about.
Yeah. The project should be wrapped up around midsummer. And that's where you'll see, for the exterior in particular, that's where you'll see the canopies on both the north and south elevator towers, kind of those corners. You'll notice we opened up the south elevator tower there with additional glass partition. And one of the other things that we're doing is we're installing a rather large lighted public parking sign. And really, that's, you know, that's to help our downtown parkers. We're surprised by how often people don't realize that the parking garages that are available, they can park in, right? If they're not used to coming downtown, they're not sure about parking in a garage, we want to make sure they know we have plenty of public parking. So, midsummer.
Thank you.
All right. Looking at our next department issue, this is the issue of workforce development. Workforce development is challenging in many organizations, specifically attracting and retaining employees. I think, you know, Eric mentioned it in his presentation, we see that on the transit side too, and that's just recruiting folks for the open positions that we have. It's particularly difficult in the bus operator category because of the different shifts that bus operators work and some of the demands that are placed on their schedule. We recently worked with the Transportation Safety Institute and hosted a course for transit trainers. And so we had several of our staff attend that. We also had some people in from California, Nevada, Texas, Missouri, Louisiana. And that was kind of the common theme, was just the difficulty in recruiting and retaining bus operators. So, with that challenge of recruiting individuals to our workforce, we simply, or we definitely want to make sure once we have recruited them, that we retain them. And so how are we doing that? Throughout this last year, we conducted five different employee focus groups, just to understand what our employees liked and appreciated about their job, what are some challenges that they're having. And primarily, we wanted to get their feedback on our core values. As a management team, we've developed a set of core values on a preliminary basis. We wanted to make sure they resonated with our frontline staff, and that any suggestions our frontline staff had for our core values, those were incorporated into them as well. So, the focus groups were one thing we did. We've also expanded the way we recruit. We've been attending some job fairs. And in terms of developing our employees, we conducted over 71 training classes last year for all levels of staff, but primarily bus operators and mechanics. One of the things I would like to mention is, we try to continue to diversify our training. And we had a great partnership opportunity this year with the Oklahoma City Police Department, where they came out and actually led accident investigation training classes for us. And so we just want to thank them for their efforts. It wasn't that they just came out once and did a class and they were done. They made multiple trips out to our location to make sure they could catch all the people that needed to be trained as the different shifts were changing. So, on the next issue, this is the issue for sustainable growth and service development. And what we're really trying to capture in this issue is that as we add modes and we expand service, what we see as a city department, as a transit agency, is demand for those services continues to grow. And so, the best example I have of that is our night service. You know, in FY 15, when we launched that night service, we started with two routes, as you'll recall. And many of us thought, you know, how successful is this going to be with just two routes out at night? Is anybody going to use it? There's not a lot of connections. Well, what we saw was the community quickly embraced those routes. We added two more. Again, our community quickly embraced using those night routes. And so, it's actually, you know, one of our fastest-growing areas of ridership. So that's what we mean by sustainable growth and service development. In thinking of new modes, there's obviously none more prevalent than Oklahoma City Streetcar. And as the operator of the Streetcar, we've been working diligently to set up operations. And I have some images on the slide here that, and really what this captures is although we've been working for years now to set up operations, visually, you can tell just by driving the route that it's getting closer and closer. We've had the delivery of the first vehicle. Hopefully, you've seen some of the construction of the shelters, some of the information pylons are being installed. And so, the project is really coming together, and we're certainly looking forward to the service. In terms of major milestones, I know I did a presentation on this to council in detail, so I won't spend a lot of time on this, but just as a recap, we do expect to begin testing on the B-line at the end of May. That's the Bricktown Loop. We're looking for D-line or the Downtown Loop testing to begin in August. Final Streetcars arriving in October. Revenue service in December. And I will say, you know, when we start our testing, there's a lot of clearance testing that we do with what we call a clearance cart before we even put a vehicle on the track. So if you get questions about, well, when are we actually going to see a vehicle on the track and being tested? That could be later on into June. But some of those clearances with the route are very tight. They're designed to be so. And so we want to do a clearance test before we even... And so, we want to do a clearance test before we even put a vehicle out there. And then, just in case you're curious about the picture, these are cases of water in one of the Streetcar vehicles. And we use cases of water to simulate the weight of passengers for propulsion and braking testing out on the non-revenue track.
So, Jason, talking about simulating passengers, I think you and I maybe have talked about this, but I've had some citizens say, when we begin this testing, let's make sure that people either know that we're testing, or figure out a fun way to make it look like they're people in them. Because there, you know, there is a group of people that are likely to say, we told you nobody would ever ride those things, when we're driving them around testing.
Yeah.
So, let's be clever in our marketing of this.
Yep. We will, yes, we're absolutely aware of that and agree. We have to get that message out there. We are in testing, and beyond just the header sign. So, we'll do that. Okay. Then looking at sustainable growth and service development, also, as I mentioned, I'm pleased to report that the proposed budget includes bus system improvements. Although we are obviously prioritizing Oklahoma City Streetcar Service, we don't want to lose sight of the incremental bus system improvements that we can make, those improvements that were outlined in the Transit System Analysis that was conducted in 2013. So, the message is, we continue to work that plan, and the addition of Route 22 to our night service lineup is evidence of that. So, beginning in July, we'll be offering bus service till midnight on Route 22. You can see Route 22 traverses along Northeast Fourth and Martin Luther King, serving key areas such as Metro Tech and the Oklahoma City County Health Complex. We're also rerouting Route 50. This is the Downtown Discovery Route, and we're going to route it through areas, the Deep Deuce area, along up north, along Oklahoma and Sixth Street. And the idea there is to provide some transit options for all that residential development that we see in that area of downtown, which would provide a direct connection to the Streetcar line. So, we're looking forward to the realignment of Route 50. And then, the other thing that we don't mention a lot is with the addition particularly of Route 22 at night, that also opens up paratransit service for individuals within three-quarters of a mile of that Route 22. So, night offerings for paratransit will also be expanded. And then, probably the most exciting news we have for our bus system improvements is the addition of Sunday service. And again, the proposed budget includes $931,000 of funding to establish Sunday service. We'll now have, with the approval of the budget, transit service seven days a week in Oklahoma City. And I'm proud to report that the Sunday service that we are looking to establish is consistent with what we're already doing on Saturdays. So, instead of an incremental approach like we used for night service, Sunday will basically be the same service we have on Saturdays. Over 17 of our bus routes offering one-hour frequency with a service span of about 11 and a half hours per day.
Jason, that deserves a round of applause, really. It's so exciting.
We're very excited about it.
We've been working on this for years, to try to figure out how to accomplish this. And I know your team has been, and, you know, when you talk about going back to 15 already, that we were beginning to add night service, you know, this change has been incremental. But every time you've made change, it's made a difference. And we've been able to increase ridership and do all the things we wanted to. Larry, Larry's been talking about this forever, and former Councilman Pete White, working on it as well. And I just am so proud that this is the year you've been able to accomplish this.
So, when will the service first start, and how will you publicize it?
Yeah, so, we're looking to start the service basically in the winter of this fiscal year. So, you know, we're looking at January to February of 2019. That's typical with how we launch new service like this. It's going to, particularly with this Sunday, because it's going to be a big challenge recruiting those additional operators to provide that service. In terms of publicity, you know, I'm just absolutely confident in our marketing team's ability to do that. They've done that time and time again. It's a combination. It's social media, sometimes it's radio advertising, a lot of it is just signage on the buses and at the transit center, letting our customers know. So, it'll be, there'll be multiple ways that we'll engage the community through a marketing plan.
I'll just echo what Councilwoman Salier said. You know, one thing I've noticed in the kind of 10 years between my two times here, my two stints here at City Hall, was the greatly expanded advocacy for bus service here in Oklahoma City. And that's clearly reflected as well on the council. And I know everybody's very, very excited about this. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jason, may I ask another question? I probably should wait till the end, but on the modified Route 50.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Will we be able to provide service into the Health Sciences Campus? Or are we not going quite that far yet?
No, we won't go that far. It's basically going to go as far east, or as far east as like Joe Carter, and then think up through Deep Deuce, and then kind of up to Sixth Street, so.
Okay.
Yep.
One additional comment. Can we go back to that slide? Thank you for making sure that we cover different portions of Oklahoma City. Just looking, we definitely cover far eastern, the far eastern part of Oklahoma City, so thank you. So, 23rd, Northeast 23rd, and Coltrane is on there, then seeing Martin Luther King on there. So, I just want to say, thank you for making sure that we spread this seven-day service across the city.
Thank you. Okay. Then the next slide here is just a look at our ridership. You know, one of the best ways to gauge whether we're growing in a sustainable fashion is our ridership. This is a graph of our riders per service hour, indicated by the line graph, and then our average passengers per day on our Monday-through-Friday weekday-only service, represented by the bar chart. You can see for FY18, we're at about 10,300 trips per day on average with our Monday-through-Friday bus service. That is down from our high, kind of our record high basically in FY16, but still ahead of what our ridership was in FY14, prior to really launching our system enhancements. On the next slide is a look at ridership for both the ferry and the bike-share transportation services. You can see in the top left, our ridership for our ferry service. With our most recent completed fiscal year, FY17, we had over 16,000 trips on the ferry service. Again, that was a record year for us on the Oklahoma River cruises. And then, looking at the bottom right, you can see our bike-share ridership. Again, our FY18 is an estimated number, but what we've seen with the new bike-share system and equipment is increases in ridership and usage by the community as well. And then, our last department issue is community relations. And this is, you know, really an issue that I think, as a city, all city departments probably deal with, but it's just meeting those expectations of the community. So, whether it's enhanced service, whether it's maintaining our facilities, or it's even just communicating with our community, there are increased community expectations. And so, addressing community relations is paramount for us as a department. One of the things we try to do in terms of community relations is let the community know what it is that we're doing, why we're making decisions, really just trying to have that dialogue. And so, here's some examples of some things that we did last year in the areas of public engagement. Over on the left, you can see a Streetcar Community Luncheon that we attended. We were invited by a member of the media to just sit down at a restaurant along the Oklahoma City Streetcar Route, provide some answers to some questions that some various stakeholders had, and really just an educational opportunity. The middle picture is one of the focus groups that we held this year with the community as part of our fair study. We basically had multiple focus groups. We're invited different people from the community to really help us understand our fair structure and find out what our community wanted in terms of a Streetcar Fair and Transit Fairs. And then, on the bottom, I'm sorry, and then on the right-hand side of the slide, this is a recent round of community meetings we just completed, where the service changes I've mentioned, such as Route 22, the changes to Route 50, establishing the Streetcar Fair and the Universal Transit Pass. We actually had five community meetings throughout the city, in addition to a formal public hearing here during one of our COTPA board meetings, to really just talk to the community about those changes again, so there's no surprises. Also, with public engagement, probably our most highly-attended public engagement event was the Streetcar Vehicle Open House. You can see photos there. I know many of you attended that event. It was very, very exciting to see the community come out in those kinds of numbers, really just to look at the vehicles, so we can imagine what opening day will be like. Expect it to be much more than that, and we're looking forward to it. Bus shelter improvements, I know is a priority to council, it's a priority to the COTPA Board of Trustees. And we continue to address improving our bus stops. It doesn't take long, driving one of our bus routes, to notice that there are many stop locations that need improvement. However, as I've reported in the past, we are pleased to let you know that we've basically, at this point, doubled the number of covered shelters that we have in our system. We have 77 of the new Brasco-style shelters that you see with the glass sides, the security lighting, the trash receptacles. In addition to that, we've identified 48 additional locations for covered shelters. 24 of those locations have all of the concrete work done, whether it be the concrete pad, the sidewalk extension, the curb cut, whatever's required to make them ADA-accessible. That work is done. We have 24 other locations where that work is in progress. And then, we're optimistic that by the end of this summer, we'll have the shelters installed at each of those 48 locations. We also have at least another 24 locations that we've identified, once we get these 48 done. So, we'll just continue to work through and add those shelters as we can. One thing, again, I want to mention is just the partnership with Public Works. They have been just a tremendous help for us on this project. In fact, they're able to leverage some GeoBond funds to help with some of the concrete work. COTPA is able to purchase the shelter, and so, obviously, that makes the resources go a lot further. And their project management team managing the construction for us has just been extremely helpful. All right. So, that wraps up our discussion of the issues and kind of what we're doing to try to address those issues. I would direct you to our budget, and you can find it on Pages C, 145 in the Budget Book. And what I'm going to spend, just on the next three slides or so, this is our overall COTPA Trust budget that I'm going to share with you. So, it varies a little bit from what you see in the Budget Book, because that is the city portion of the budget. When you look at the total budget required for parking and transit services, it's just over $43 million. You can see that the bus transit makes up the largest portion of that, at just over $29 million. The parking budget, 20% of the overall, at $8.7 million. The Streetcar budget, which the budget does include the completion of Phase II of Streetcar operations, as well as revenue service for the second half of the year, at 9% of the budget, or $4 million. Our Oklahoma River cruises represent 2% of the budget, at just under $1 million, and then Bike Share at $223,000. So, that's ours expenditures, that's what's required to provide those services. In terms of funding sources, the revenue side of the equation, this is our off-street parking revenue. And it's important to note that, as you know, our parking system is completely self-sufficient. So, there's no general fund money that supports the parking system. In fact, you can see there that $1.2 million of the revenue comes from our daily parkers, at 14%. Our monthly revenue, from those that park in our garages, you know, have a monthly contract, they park there every day, that's just under $5.3 million, or 61% of our revenue. Our event revenue comes in at just under $1.9, or 22% of our revenue budget, and then other is about $300,000. And then, looking at the funding sources for transit operations, as you'll note, and it's no surprise, it's really the city's general fund contribution that makes up the lion's share of the funding sources for public transportation services, at just under $22 million. Our federal grant revenue that we can use to offset some of the operating costs through capital maintenance reimbursement is just under $7.5 million, or 21% of the revenue sources. Fairs make up $3.3 million, or about 10%. State revenue, we receive from the state, is just over $1 million, and then other revenues, just over $1 million as well. So, that's how the transportation functions are supported.
Jason, how long has it been since that state appropriation has changed?
Since at least...
I guess I danced, gone up.
I'm thinking since at least 2005, well before my time in public transit. Yep. So, major changes, we've talked about most of these. Night service on Route 22, Sunday bus service, and Streetcar Operations funding. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions regarding our 2019 proposed budget.
Michael, could you look at the internet and pull up Embarc's bus route map page, the first one that shows all of the routes? Can you show that on the screen? If not, that's okay, I can still make a comment. Okay, well, thank you. Okay. So, if you fall, I would make this general comment, Jason. I would compare our public transportation system, the strategic layout, with any major metropolitan area in the country. Because if you look at, for example, on Page A28, identifying the 40 largest, roughly 40, I think there's 38 or 37, employers in Oklahoma City, our bus routes cover most of those employers. And despite the fact that we don't have large centers of employment excluding the state employees, and they're spread out, you know, but we've got two routes that go right by the Capitol, East and West on 23rd, North and South. And then, you look at the fact that we cover just about every high school, most major hospitals in the city, many, many shopping centers and grocery stores, you name it, our bus routes pretty well covered. Then, you know, given the limitations or the challenges that 622 miles create as far as total coverage, again, I don't think there's a more strategically laid-out bus system than what we have here in Oklahoma City. And it covers just about every aspect that you would hope public transportation would cover. And then, I know it's not in your budget, but at some point, not in the tooth-distance future, we're going to introduce a rapid bus route. And that'll just continue to enhance the public transportation here in Oklahoma City. In the almost eight years that I've been a part of the council, I don't know of any other municipality in the country who's made such, I'd say, tremendous improvements in their overall public transportation. And I just commend you and your staff for a very great effort. Thank you.
I totally concur with David. We've seen, in the 10 years I've been here, we've seen every year, growth and progress in delivering better service to our riders. And I just can't understate how important I think today is in presenting this budget and making these additions, being able to absorb Streetcar operations, and being able to offer Sunday service and expanded night service are all critical pieces to making this work better. And we just appreciate your leadership. Sorry, I didn't say that to Eric when he was up here. You know, this city is so blessed with extraordinary leadership, but, you know, this is a lot to take on. We're really making some significant strides, and we appreciate it very much. Great team.
We appreciate the support. And yeah, this is just a tremendously, a tremendous, exciting budget year for us, when you think about being able to continue to work our plan on the bus system side and the Sunday service, and then, of course, like you say, the Oklahoma City Streetcar. And you're right, the system we have, it is, it's laid out to where we hit most of the major areas. The trade-off is always coverage versus frequency, and that's something we struggle with, you know, just on a daily basis, you know.
Well, and I would put this challenge out to the citizens of Oklahoma City. If they want more frequency, they need to start utilizing the system we have in place now at a higher level. It's entirely up to them. I'm not going to apologize for the current... I'm not going to apologize for the current frequency until we see citizens take advantage of what we're offering at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bob Teener to talk to us about Development Services.
Good morning. I'm going to walk us through, walk you through the Development Services presentation, go through each division. I'd like to introduce a few people before we get started. Rick Wickencamp is my Assistant Director. He really put this presentation together. Carol Reed's a Management Specialist, she worked on a budget for us. David Adcox, Development Center Manager. Charles Lox, the Co-Enforcement Superintendent. And then on this side, John Gary is our Animal Welfare Superintendent. J.J. Chambliss had a conflict, he's not here, he's zoning subdivision. And my only request is no accounting questions during my presentation. Okay, the first slide, I want to read the mission statement. Mission of the Development Services Department is to provide animal welfare, code enforcement, construction permitting and inspections, licensing and development application review services to the development community and general public, so they can receive timely development decisions and live in a clean, safe, and stable city. Organizationally, we're proposing to add ten positions, which will bring us to full-time employees of one-hundred-and-ninety-two. Seventy-nine of those positions are field officers. Our budget summary, the total operating budget proposed is nineteen million, one-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-ninety-three. That's about a ten percent increase from over last year's budget. Our major budget changes, we have ten, as I said, we have ten proposed changes. We're asking to restore two code inspection officers this year. We're asking to add three positions in animal welfare. Animal welfare Officer Ones are the people that work in the, with the animals in the shelter, take care of the daily maintenance. Officer Twos, those are the field officers. This addition will give us fourteen total field officers, animal welfare. And the supervisor is going to be over the customer counter and facilities maintenance. Those are restorations from previous reductions. Development Center, we're adding five new positions. The Plans Examiner and one of the Office Coordinators are covering previous reductions. Plans Examiner will help us with plan review of the permits. The Office Coordinator will work with our admin staff, they'll work on our oil and gas program. The Records Control Technician, one of them will be to manage our documents. The Development Center receives about eighteen thousand submittals a year, so it's really important that we can scan those documents and keep them orderly where other departments can access them. The Second Records Control Technician's going to be used to deal with our records, open records requests, and I'll talk about, a little more detail about that in a minute. And the Development Liaison, that's a new position that we're proposing to try to help us with our development review process, and that's a position that will answer to the Development Center Manager.
Bob, that position received a standing ovation at the ULI presentation last week, when Mayor Holt announced that we were going to be adding that role.
Yeah, that's big news for a lot of people in our community, so good on you.
We're really excited about it, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Now I'm going to talk about Development Center. They're responsible for enforcement of construction building codes, review of building permits, issuing of permits and business licenses. As you can see there, we did over a hundred-and-sixteen thousand inspections last year. We have forty inspectors in the field. We also issued fifty thousand permits, different types of permits, and twenty-three-hundred, just over twenty-three thousand, I mean, business licenses. As I just said, we have over a hundred-and-sixteen thousand inspections, and prior to FY-13, we were having trouble getting those inspections done in a timely manner. The Auditor's Office did a performance audit, and they identified some different issues that we needed to address. Really, one of the main things was our inspectors seemed to be in the office too much, weren't out in the field doing those inspections. But before the audit, our goal was, we needed, we wanted our inspections done within two days, seventy percent of the time, and to my knowledge, we never made that. So, once we got those audits, and one of the main recommendations, like I said, was the time in the office. So what we've done now with our inspectors is they now dispatch out of their homes. So we send them their inspections each day on their computer, and, you know, just that factor, we get two or three additional inspections a day out of each inspector. So that really helped us turn this around. You can note there on FY-17, we had, we kind of dropped down under our ninety percent target, but that's, we had a reduction in a building, building inspector and electrical inspector, and we had multiple other vacancies at the time, and so it really impacted our ability to get those inspections done timely. But now those issues are behind us, excuse me, are behind us, and we're estimated to make it at ninety-two percent this year. This next slide, one of the things that we identified when we went to more inspections, we were concerned about the quality of the inspections. You know, timeliness is good, but if you lose your quality of inspection, then that hurt us, could hurt us. So, what we do is our Inspector Twos, sometimes our Chiefs, will follow up randomly on an inspection, just to verify that the inspection was done accurately. I know this slide's kind of up and down, as we had a lot of transition in our chief. Actually, we've got a new construction inspection superintendent and four new chiefs since the audit. So, this year, we've emphasized training and doing as many of these quality control inspections as we can, and our numbers are up. But, you know, you need to balance timeliness with quality of inspections, so we're working very hard on that. Now I'll talk a little bit about the Second Records Control Technician. Oklahoma City gets about four thousand open records requests a year, and the Development Center gets about a thousand of those. So currently, we have, we have to pull a customer service rep off of our permit counter, licensing permit counter, to respond to those open records requests. So this technician, and sometimes we've even had to pull plan reviewers over to help. So this Records Control Technician will take over that duty, will allow us to put that position back on the counter, which will improve our customer service there. So, we feel like this is a good opportunity to improve our service on the counter, but also, you know, be able to manage those requests. And then the Development Liaison, we talked about a little bit, I mean, our goal here is to help developers, especially new developers, work through the process. The Development Center takes the application, but those applications are reviewed by Public Works and Utilities and Fire. If you do a development downtown, there's designer view meetings, and so we're hoping that this position can help developers understand the process, help them identify, you know, where their permit is in the process. And we're also looking forward, this position, to identify holdups in our process that we can deal, we can deal with. So we're excited about it, not sure how it's going to work, we're going to, and we've been talking about it for a couple of years, but this is the first opportunity we've had to try to implement it, so.
So, do you consider this kind of a hybrid of a one-stop shop, so that somebody can come in and meet with that liaison and be directed to all of these various places?
Yes, I mean, that's what we're hoping for. And this position should also help us with our occupancy permit. At the end, once you go through all your permit review and get your inspections, there always seems to be issues with getting that final occupancy, and this position will be able to help staff get that and get the department.
Great, thank you so much.
So we're looking forward to how this works, and hopefully, it'll work good for us. Now I'll talk about code enforcement. This division has fifty-one employees, twenty-five of those are office field officers. They do different, all kinds of different inspections. They do the unsecured, dilapidated structures that the council sees each Tuesday. They also do high grass and weeds, junk and debris in operable vehicles, illegal signs. As you can see there, we did over eighty-five thousand inspections last year, and we have twenty-five officers.
Thank you for not using a picture that has any of our signs.
We had to toss a few off before we took the picture.
Yeah, very thoughtful.
We worked it out.
And before I forget, we do have a whole bunch of Thunder Up signs, or Go Thunder signs in Medians that probably need to be removed.
We're not quite ready to let go, Meg, but thank you.
Quick question. I know back in the day, you all used to allow owners of those signs to come and pick up those signs. Do you all still do that, or how is that done now?
Well, at one time, that was part of the ordinance, that we would store the signs, and you could buy them back, a candidate could buy them back, but the council, and I can't remember how many years ago, they changed that ordinance, and now they're just considered trash, and we dispose of them all. So, you can't really get them back.
All right, thank you.
That was just a decision we made, trying, it got where it was hard to manage that kind of a program.
All right, thank you.
As part of their inspections, we try to get an inspector to respond within four days, eighty percent of the time. So if somebody submits a complaint to the Action Center, we want an inspector out there within four days to start the inspection process. As you can see from here, we've done a pretty good job. We've started to drop off, in the last two years, we've cut seven positions from the inspection area, and so our numbers have kind of dropped, but with these, the restoration of these two, we're hoping to get that back up into the eighties, so. And this one, this is really kind of a bright spot for us. We ask our inspectors, when they give someone notice, and they're the property owner, to work with those property owners to try to get them to comply, get them to eliminate the violations, so we don't have to write a citation, or hire a contractor, use one of our contractors to abate the problem. You know, we were trending down the last three years, and it really kind of depends on the property owner. If you get a lot of absentee owners that aren't on the property, it's harder to work with them to get resolution, but, you know, we're here, we're looking at, three out of four of our inspections are resolved before we have to do any additional follow-up through municipal court or with a contractor. So this is, you know, we're hoping this trend continues here. I just want to give you some examples of what the inspectors see in the field, kind of before and after. You know, this house has several boarded-up windows, open stairs. This property owner came back and did some brick accents, you know, redid the railing on the porch, a new roof, so, you know, I'm sure a neighbor would much rather see that than, you know, what was before there. This next one's another similar situation, had, you know, old asbestos shingles on it, you know, some plywood in the back, and this property owner was able to completely redo the property, re-brick it and re-riff it, and I'm sure, you know, if you're a neighbor of that, you'd much rather see the one on the right. And this next picture, this is Councilman Griner's favorite property. We just wanted to show, it's called Hartford, it tends now, I think, I understand they have like twenty-five percent occupancy. We spent a lot of man-hours and a lot of money, and I know the Police Department, the Fire Department did, on this property, but, you know, they've really, they've made some good strides here, and so we're hoping it works out. Now I'll talk about subdivision and zoning. This is our smallest division, we have seven employees. They do over six-hundred-and-fifty zoning subdivision applications a year. Really, this, their primary duty is to support the Planning Commission, the Board of Adjustment. They also prepare the staff reports and memos that you see each Tuesday. Another key part of what they do is they interpret the code. If there's a developer, or a home builder, or a citizen that needs, has a question about where they can put their storage building, or this staff, they're really the experts on the zoning code. And just about every development, that new development we get in Oklahoma City comes through this division at some point. And here's a, our measure, we try to receive a rezoning decision within a hundred-and-twenty days of submission, ninety-five percent of the time. As you can see here, they've done a pretty good job. I think we really, what really helps there is this staff tries to make sure applicants have a completed application when they submit. The things that delay these processes are when they have to wait on an ownership list or a site plan. What we try to do is, when we take the application, is as complete as possible, and that helps Planning Commission and Council when you see it. And they also, they support the Planning Commission, so they've identified things that are hot buttons with the Planning Commission and Council, like signs and sidewalks, building materials, so they can, they can work with the applicants prior to the meeting, try to work a lot of those things out. The more those things they get worked out, you know, the less negotiation that has to go on at the Planning Commission and Council. You know, they can't control protesters and those types of things, but this is, you know, really a pretty successful number.
Bob, I've got a question, and it may not, you might not be the right one to ask this of, but what percentage of zoning decisions fall into our normal zoning versus spud and pud, you know?
I don't know that number, but I can get it for you. The numbers have gone up on spuds and puds, because it allows Planning Commission and Council to make some, put some controls in there, but I'll get that number for you, I don't, I don't know it. This next one, this is preliminary Platts, this is mostly residential developments. You know, the important thing here is our staff will work with an engineer when they come in and make sure that lot layouts are appropriate and meet the subdivision regulations and the street layout. And I think an even bigger piece of this is that they have to make sure there's no duplicates on street names, and they also have to address all those lots and make sure they stay in conformance with our addressing system, because really, address, once a lot is addressed, it follows it all the way through the, as you know, the building permit process, utilities, and then responses from police and fire. So it's important that those addresses are done correctly and accurately. Now I'll talk about animal welfare. They, there's fifty-one employees, they're open seven days a week. As you can see there, we have over eight thousand visitors a month, so this is, John and his staff work very hard to provide humane care for the animals and not get overwhelmed. And we've had a lot of support from the Manager's Office and the Council, and we appreciate that. And we've also had a lot of, we have a lot of partners. ASPCA was a partner, they provided some grant money for us to do some things. Oklahoma Humane, Central Oklahoma Humane is probably our key partner. You know, we send them a lot of our animals, and they work, work really on the Community Cat Program, several programs with us. There's also, I'm going to look at my note here. Oh, the, I want to mention Shawnee Milling Company, they provided three years of pet food. You know, one thing we've learned is quality pet food for those animals in the shelter helps them not get sick, not be stressed, and so that's been, that's really something that has worked out well for us. The Patrons of the Shelter, they're a nonprofit organization that raise money and donate it to the shelter, so we can deal, you know, occasionally, we'll get some special situation where we need to use donated money, and they provide that. Another piece of it, we have a lot of foster parents or families. You know, when we get an animal in the shelter that's adoptable, but it's injured, or sick, or maybe it's too young, these foster families will take them and treat, keep them, our vet, our vet will treat them, but then they keep them and then come back and we can adopt them out. We save a lot of animals that way by having people that are willing to... We save a lot of animals that way by having people that are willing to, to do that. And then there are, the last thing I'll say is the 470 volunteers. We probably couldn't provide the care if we didn't have volunteers out there every day. They do, you know, they wash blankets, they clean the grounds up, they walk the animals, and you know, we'll take any volunteer just about willing to come out there. And we've been very, very lucky with the community helping us in those programs. And then another area that we stretched, stressed is community outreach. We try to provide education to pet owners. You know, it's really important, there wouldn't be any animals in the shelter, very few if some pet owner hadn't let the dog loose, or, so it's important for us to, to educate pet owners, to help us with our live release rate, with, you know, with the number of animals in the shelter. And we, last year, we created a program dedicated to the community outreach piece of what we do. And I forgot to mention this on the last slide, but we do a community spade and neuter program as well. We do over 5,000 free spade and neuters for the community. If you're a citizen of Oklahoma City, and you want to get your animals spayed or neutered, you can just call, make an appointment, and we provide that service. And I think that's, that's really important. And this next slide here is probably my favorite. You know, we're projecting now to get hit 75% of our live, actually, live release rate this year. That's the highest in history. You know, it wasn't that long ago that we were releasing under 50% of the animals, we're leaving the shelter alive. So John and his staff, I mean, have really worked hard to achieve this. And you know, I think a lot of it is that spade and neuter program that's available now, as well as the community outreach to showing people how important it is to take care of your animal. This next slide.
If I might ask real quick on that last slide, remind me, I know that there's no true no-kill shelter, eventually you have to euthanize some, but what is the percentage where you feel like you're at that point?
Well, later on in the presentation, I have something to talk about that.
Okay, very good, I'll wait.
Okay. This next slide, this, this is important, this is the number of animals that are sheltered, and that's a, a positive trend. And I think that's a result of our spade and neuter programs and our, and our community outreach. And the other thing I want to note here is that, you know, as, as this number's gone down, Oklahoma City's population has gone up. And as it goes up, that means there's more pets in the community. So it's really kind of amazing that we've been able to keep this trend down as we pick up more pets in the community. And now my last slide. These are some things that we've identified that we need to work on. Our customer service and development center. You know, they, as you saw from the inspections and the permit requests, we have a lot of calls, a lot of walk-in, so we need to do everything we can, and we're really looking at, at online permitting, whatever benefits technology can do for us here to improve our customer service, that's where we're going here. I've already talked about the liaison, that may help. The records technicians that we're adding would help, and then being able to move that customer service rep onto the permit counter, back onto the permit counter, all those things should help our customer service. And then the take-home vehicles, I talked about that a little bit with the construction inspections, but we're going to move our code enforcement officers to take-home vehicles. It'll prove their efficiency as well. The inspections are different, so you may not get two or three days, but you should get one or two inspections, you know, where it will get better. So that's what we're looking to do then, we'll, we'll probably do that in June or July. And then the Target Zero implementation. Target Zero's a national organization that tries to help municipal shelters improve their live release rate. They came in January and did an assessment of the things we're doing, and their goal is 90% or higher for animals. What we found out is, we were already doing a lot of the things that they recommended or at some form of it. But we started a managed intake program, where if you want to bring your animal in, you know, we want you to make an appointment, so we can talk through the reasons you're bringing that animal to us. So in Target Zero's mind, 90% live release could be a possibility. And I know John is, is going to strive for that. I didn't mention, but our first quarter this year, we'd gone up to 80%, I don't, so we might exceed that 75%, so.
And David, there was actually one month where we were negative. That was really, really impressive.
Cool. Yeah, we did a couple of Clear the Shelter events, where we were able to adopt all our adoptable animals out, so. So short of accounting questions, I'll take any questions.
Incredible work, I mean, this is, this is a numbers point, but in the 10 years from 2008 to, to today, we've gone from 35 to 75%. It's, it's just incredible focus on that specific area, and really good work.
We really do appreciate the support, though we couldn't do it without council support and manager's office. Mr. Couch?
That concludes our presentations this morning at the Finance Committee.
All right. Any other, on this particular topic, any discussion from the council this morning? Are we ready to adjourn Finance Committee? All right, we'll adjourn Finance Committee, we'll reconver, reconvene as the city council, and we'll move on to item five, items from council, and I think I'm going to try to keep this routine, we'll go now down toward one.
Well, I'm going to have to, have to say something about this absolutely incredible weekend in Oklahoma City, and so I just wanted to express some particular congratulations to the Arts Council. Really successful festival Tuesday through Sunday. Couldn't have asked for more beautiful weather, other than my day, which was Wednesday, and even a little bit of rain didn't keep people from attending. I think the food vendors and the artists all just had a great experience, and there were certainly a lot of folks down there. We also had the 18th running of the National Memorial Marathon on Sunday. There were just under 25,000 participants in the race. 18, this is our 18th year, we, all 50 states were represented in 13 foreign countries, and I heard from Carrie Watkins yesterday that there were a couple of representatives from different cities shadowing her to see how we were done and their comments were, that they, they don't even begin to approach the relationship that their race organization has with the city. And I just, it was a really big compliment to all of our staff to work so closely with them. And I guess the third thing I wanted to say is that the streetcar contractor, our friends from Herzog, did an incredible job getting not just Broadway, but all of the streetcar construction sites cleaned up and safe, and at least temporary patches made, and the runners were really complimentary about the way the course looked. And that was something that not many of us believed would happen, so hats off to everybody involved in that as well.
Very good.
I just want to echo Meg's comments, Saturday and Sunday, Debbie and I came downtown, downtown was electric, it was really fun. And it wasn't just downtown, we went to the Plaza for lunch on Sunday, there were people there, we drove by Chisholm Creek, there were people there in large numbers, and there was just a great turnout, beautiful weekend. The city should be very proud of what it accomplished. Secondly, tonight is Summerfield's Annual Homeowners Association Meeting, they have 700 homes, and they have a good turnout, and I look forward to meeting with them and, and conversing with them about issues in the city. Thank you.
Very good.
David, I forgot, tonight is also the Starts of Education event, we'll be recognizing the Teacher of the Year, and all the great work done by both teachers and support staff in the OKCPS.
Great. All right, well, we will move on, I don't believe there are any city manager reports?
No, sir.
We'll move on to citizens to be heard. Taylor Doe signed up to speak. Taylor, if you'd just come to the microphone and state your name and address, and we'd ask you to keep your remarks to three minutes.
Yes, sir. My name is Taylor Doe, I live at 1835 Northeast Sixth Street, and I wanted to quickly voice my support for the night route for Route 22. So my brother and I run a little tech company, I live and work on the east side. For the last six or seven years, I've had the privilege to work and be around four schools on the east side, building relationships with students and with parents, and so they've become like family to me. And conversations that come up via text, and on the phone, and at barbecues, and birthday parties, is work, or employment, or making money. And so something that correlates to that is transit. So what I see a lot with some of my family members is, they get a job, and then because of lack of consistent transportation, hours start getting cut, and you lose your job, and you start the cycle over and over again. And so I see that close correlation between public transit and employment in our city, and I'm about people making money, and social mobility, and different things like that. And so what we've done with Route 22 is extending those hours and allowing people from the east side to get into different areas of work after that seven o'clock hour, people picking up another shift, trying to get some more hours, make more money for their family. So I wanted to voice that support. As well as just something for the city to think about is, looking at our ridership, our non-choice versus choice riders, and where they're trying to get to in regards to work. So I know, I'm, I'm very excited about what Embarc is doing with their layout, but I've also been talking with employment agencies and different families that I talk with, on where they're trying to get warehouse districts, people who are hiring low-wage workers, which is a high percentage of our, our ridership, because they're non-choice, they don't have a choice to take a car, or do different things like that. So just to keep that in mind of, as we're looking at routes and different things like that, of the importance of employment and that consistent transit. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming down. And we have one other person who signed up to speak, Michael C. Washington. If you would please state your name and your address.
Yes, sir. Michael C. Washington, 2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma 73111. Again, this is our first meeting, new mayor, and I guess you get a chance to meet a new man today. Thank you.
Nice to meet you, Michael.
Thank you. Well, first of all, sir, I think you were present during a recent community gathering with this incompetent joke for a councilman over here. Let me tell you, sir, I have a great, great illustrious disrespect for this guy, who's, I feel is trash. I'm using my First Amendment right to discuss what I feel as a citizen on the northeast side of Oklahoma City. Every time that this no-good incompetent excuse of a city councilman decides to hold a public meeting in an open forum, and where I may attend, he has the audacity, with your spoiled incompetent self, to try and make sure that I'm not available to discuss any contradiction that this idiot here thinks that he wants to present to the public. Well, sir, let me tell you one thing, you want to run for city council, whatever steps you think you're going to take, buddy, I'm going to be there, and I'm going to speak myself, express myself, whether you, anybody you know, like it or not. I want you to understand that you will not become county commissioner for our outside, you can better believe that. We're going to make sure that the campaign starts today, guy. You are ultimate disrespectful, how in the world can you talk about you represent people here on the northeast side, but you sing a one of us out? Are you kidding me, dude? Or you not learning where you come from, dude? Because you know you live in our community, dude?
Mr. Washington, we just asked, really, the only content that's usually off limits here is talking about political campaigns.
I'm not talking about political campaign, I'm talking about the man, I'm not talking about, you didn't hear me say anything about what he's done. I said per se, me, regarding me, not what he's done, I said me. Again, you incompetent, no-good, sorry excuse of a councilman. Now I'm stopping short of calling you an incompetent, no-good human being, because God won't allow me to do that, okay? So I'll excuse that part of you, but other than that, I have no respect for you, man. You understand me? How in the world can you not allow a citizen to get up there and speak against you, because you want to feel so good, quote-unquote, all the people that you're representing about what a great job you're doing? You don't single a person out, dude, I have a right like everybody else, and I'm going to be there every time you have some fool, and every time you think you want to throw me out, get ready. And now, and your pocket bus is going to be lighter and lighter and lighter every doggone time you do it, you hear me? You understand me, boy, I don't give a doggone what you say. You cause this disrespect, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to respect you because of the fact you don't deserve it. You give me my respect, I'm going to demand mine in return. Other than that, you get none from me. Bottom line, and again, I thank the city council for giving me an opportunity to speak, you're not going to quiet my voice. You and nobody else is going to quiet me, dude, and like I said, you will not become commissioner for the northeast side of Oklahoma City.
Please do not speak about political campaigns.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, yeah, you will not be in, in any kind of form in church, in representations of any kind as far as a non-political, in my northeast side of Oklahoma City. And everywhere you go, if I see you out, get ready, I'm going to tell you what I think about you.
Mr. Washington, that concludes three minutes.
Thank you.
We are now done, is there any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we will go into executive session, returning to item 4B, that was previously voted on to go into executive session, we will do that, and we will return.